Unless there's objections, I'll begin calling the meeting to order. And Councilmember Stenit is migrating in this direction. Councilmember Crosby and Councilmember Gordon and DeCamp migrating in this direction. Rabbi Klein is preparing for the invocation.
We need to do the roll call, please.
Sir, do the roll call.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, almost. Can you call the roll for us, please?
Glad to. Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. DeCamp?
Here.
Mr. Ellinger?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. McCord?
Here.
Mr. Maloney?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Dr. Stevens?
Present.
Mr. Stenit? Mr. Beard?
Present.
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
And Mr. Blues?
Here.
Thank you.
Rabbi Klein is going to offer our invocation. And he just shared with me that today he spoke at the inaugural services at First Christian Church in Frankfurt. And he's going to share with us a little bit of that experience as well.
In keeping, tonight is the last night of Hanukkah. Today is the last council service meeting of the year. And this morning, we inaugurated a new chapter in the life of Kentucky. And the service this morning was amazing. The many voices from different denominations. The Kentucky State University Choir was absolutely wonderful, as was the hospitality of First Christian Church. And I think we've got the new government started off on the right path. And certainly, the horses in parade. What a great day this is for us here locally and certainly across the state. So much is in flux, and so many things in our life ebb and flow, and time passes much more quickly than any of us can imagine. Rabbi Abraham Joshua Heschel taught us that time is the most sacred of all entities. We can walk through any space again. We can walk through any engagement with each other again. But we cannot walk through any moment again. The fraction of the second is the difference between getting to answer the question on jeopardy or not, winning the gold or silver medal, or life and death in the operating room. Each moment is an opportunity for blessing. And so long as we appreciate the moment, we experience its blessing. And where we waste the moment, it's gone forever. As a community, we appreciate and value the moments, the hours, and the days that go into the jobs that our leaders do. Taking care of our community, taking care of our needs. Some are long and some are tedious, but your work are blessings across the board. They engage us. They engage our need to be heard, to be helped, to be held accountable, and to be healed. May the source of all that is holy bestow blessings upon you, upon this community because of you. May your work to govern always continue to be sealed in partnership with your work for justice. May the time off you are about to get be renewing and recharging, a sabbatical that restores your vision and your energy and your calendars. And thanks for the gifts of integrity and commitment, the gifts of love that you bring to your job daily. May we ask God's blessings upon you. And may we all say, amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rabbi Klein. Excuse me just a minute to ask. Mr. Green.
It's always better to check with Artie Green. I'm trying to find the language to actually make this introduction. It's hard to find adjectives that haven't already been used and that describe extraordinary pleasure or enormous honor to introduce Chief Anthony Beatty. There are so many adjectives that we could use and have been. And I think everyone, I know that everyone on this council shares with me the extraordinary honor it has been to have served in a public role with someone like Chief Beatty, who has been the example of leadership and inspiration and moral courage in so many ways and so many dimensions for his tenure in service to this city. And Chief Beatty asked to, and was invited to, offer his remarks as we close this session of this council and as his career moves on to the next dimension, Chief Beatty.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate it. And Vice Mayor, you scared me when you did that because the last time was at an event and all this buildup introducing the person. And they commented it was my wife they were introducing, not me. So I feel good. I just want to take this opportunity to say to each of you individually and collectively how much I appreciate your support during my tenure as police chief. And I know we didn't get to work together as a group for a long period of time. But let me say that to try to do the things we were trying to do with the Division of Police, it certainly was not something we could do or I could do by myself. It took your support, your help, your wrapping your arms around and embracing what we were trying to do to make the Division of Police the best place we could make it. And not only deliver services, but deliver them with a high degree of professionalism and make the citizens happy with the product we were producing. So that could not have happened without you. So this is not so much a goodbye as an opportunity to thank you. Because if I think back on my career, I had the opportunity to work with six mayors, and I can't even count the number of council people. Some of you have been here several terms, and I can't begin to count the number of council people that I got to work with. But Mayor Foster Pettit actually swore me in as a police officer in 1973. And then I had the pleasure of working with Mayor Amato and Mayor Basler and Mayor Miller and Mayor Isaac and now Mayor Newberry in this council. But I have to say about the council as it sits today that many of those councils that we had the pleasure of working with down through the years were not, didn't have the most cordial kind of atmosphere and the best decor. And I think in some times, it distracted from what we were trying to do for the citizens of Lexington. But I want to take this opportunity to say thank you for supporting us, supporting all the men and women at the Division of Police, but also, more importantly, to thank you for the way you're conducting the citizens' business because that's what this is about. So my last year has been bittersweet because the council and everything is working very smoothly, and it's time for me to move on. But I say thank you on behalf of the Division of Police, to folks who work there with us, and certainly the citizens that you serve. Because I know that each and every one of you contact my office many times during a day or week about issues and problems and concerns that you have. So I know the time and commitment that you make to the job, and it does not go unnoticed from my part. I know the citizens may not realize how much time and effort and energy you put into doing their work. So all I can say is thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I have been immensely blessed, my wife, my family, by the opportunity to have served and worked with each and every one of you. And I heard Rabbi Klein talking about blessings, but you have been that for me and for the agency, for the city. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Chief, before you run off, Councilmember Gordon just said that you said such nice things about us. We'd like to have our picture made with you. Would you be able to do that?
Did the talk of the lady?
Is he gone?
Yes.
Can we do that real quick? Would you all like, would that work? Okay. Susan, can you proceed with the reading of the ordinances?
Be glad to.
Do we need a?
For second reading?
Second reading, yes.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number one, an ordinance approving and adopting a program amendment for use of community development block grant funds in the 2007 consolidated plan to establish a new project, the open channel on Bryan Avenue project, and an amendment to the 2005 consolidated plan to provide a change in the scope of the work for the Valley Park project appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 99, authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number two, an ordinance amending section two of ordinance number 215, 2007, section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one position of deputy director, grade 120E, in the Office of Internal Audit, to change the effective date from January 7, 2008 to November 21, 2007. Number three, an ordinance expanding and extending partial urban services district number three for the Urban County Government for the provision of garbage and refuse collection to include the area defined as certain properties on the following streets, Mill Creek, Appian Wood Crossing Way, Jones Trail, and Longleaf Place subdivision, Longleaf Place. Number four, an ordinance expanding and extending partial urban services district number five for the Urban County Government for the provision of garbage and refuse collection and street lighting to include the areas defined as certain properties on the following streets, South Mill Commons, section three, Lawrence Street, Cravens Property, The Loss at 991, McClanahan Lane, Todd's Road, and Beaumont Center Veranda Place. Number five, an ordinance expanding and extending the full urban services district for the Urban County Government for the provision of street lighting and street cleaning and garbage and refuse collection to include the area defined as certain properties on the following streets, Angela Court, Black Horse Lane, Brackton, Bracktown Road, Bradley Lane, Lee's Town Road, Rebecca Drive, Richardson Property, unit eight, section one, Stewart Hall Boulevard, Steel Meadows LLC, property one, section one, portion of 501 Charlesburg Road, Andover Creek Lane, Arnold Properties LLC, Appian Crossing Way, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1B, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1E, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1G, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1I, Bay Springs Park, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1J, Bay Springs Park, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beacon Street, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beacon Street, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beacon Street, Beaumont Center Circle, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Beaumont Center Circle, Blackford Parkway, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1B, Blackford Parkway, New Market, Unit 4B, Brick House Lane, The Reserve, and Tates Creek, 5301 Tates Creek Road, Bridlewood Lane, Longleaf subdivision, Unit 2, Broadleaf Lane, Burgess Avenue, Sebastian Property, Unit 3C, section two, Burnt Mill Road, Sebastian Property, Unit 3B, section two, Burnt Mill Road, Sebastian Property, Unit 3E, section two, Burnt Mill Road, Ramsey Sullivan Creek Path Lane, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1A, section one, Kearney Ridge, Creek Path Lane, Masterson Station, Central Citation Village, Durania Lane, Asbury, Dawson Springs Way, Newtown Springs, Unit 2B, Dawson Springs Way, Carroll B, Raleigh B, Senior, Eastway Drive, Masterson Station, Central Citation Village, Ferndale Pass, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1G, Hibernia Pass, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1H, Hibernia Pass, Steel Meadows LLC, property section one, portion of 501 Charlesburg Road, Horsement Trails, Scully Property, Kevin O'Lane, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1B, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Creek Lane, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1C, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Creek Lane, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1D, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Creek Lane, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 3, Kearney Ridge Boulevard, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1B, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Ridge Boulevard, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1A, section one, Kearney Ridge, Kearney Ridge Boulevard, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3B, section one, Kelly Rose Way, Woodward Lander Property, Unit 1A, Laguna Court, Woodward Lander Property, Unit 1C, Lander Court, Highland Lakes, Unit 1H, Largo Lane, Scully Property, Lawson Lane, Masterson Station, Central Citation Village, Lee's Town Road, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3A, Loblawli Court, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3G, section one, Loblawli Way, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1C, Kearney Ridge, Locust Blossom Co., Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1E, Matherne Trail, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1F, Matherne Trail, Blackford Property Phase Three, Unit 1H, Matherne Trail, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1D, Kearney Ridge, Meadow Suite Lane, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 3, Meadow Suite Lane, Johnson Property, Unit 1J, Mill Bank Road, Johnson Property, Unit 1B, section two, Mill Bank Road, Steel Meadows LLC, property one, section, property section one, portion of 501 Charlesburg Road, Mist Flower Lane, Beaumont Farm, Unit 1, Monarch Street, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1D, Movado Court, Newtown Springs, Unit 1, section one, Newtown Center Way, Asbury, Newtown Springs Drive, As, Newtown Springs, Unit 1, section one, Newtown Springs Drive, Sebastian Property, Unit 3B, section two, Old Woolen Mill Lane, Sebastian Property, Unit 3A, section two, Old Woolen Mill Lane, Denton Farms Incorporated, Unit 3, section A, Ellersley at Delong, Arm's B Place, Carroll Raleigh B, Senior, Pasadena Drive, Denton Farms, Unit Incorporated, Unit 3, section A, Ellersley at Delong, Richmond Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1G, Ryaney Road, Masterson Station, Central Citation Village, Robinson Way, Russell Cave Road, Johnson Property, Unit 1B, section two, Russell Cave Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1A, Sandersville Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1B, Sandersville Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1C, Sandersville Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1D, Sandersville Road, Newtown Spring, Unit 2B, Saunders Spring Way, Asbury, Saunders Spring Way, Masterson Station, Central Citation Village, Shell Court, Newtown Springs, Unit 2B, Silver Springs Drive, Asbury, Silver Springs Drive, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3G, section one, Silver Bell Trace, Ramsey Sullivan Property, Unit 1B, Kearney Ridge, Sullivan's Trace, Ramsey Sullivan, Sullivan's Trace, Pasadena Point subdivision, Sun Seeker Court, Sunny Slope Farm, Unit 3A, Sweet Spire Drive, The Reserve, and Tates Creek, 5301 Tates Creek Road, Tates Creek Road, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1E, Tiburnan Court, Tiburnan Way, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1F, Tiburnan Way, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1G, Tiburnan Way, Woodward Lander, Property Unit 1H, Tiburnan Way, Sebastian Property, Unit 3D, Trail Lane, Sebastian Property, Unit 3B, section two, Trailwood Lane, The Reserve, and Tates Creek, 5301 Tates Creek Road, Tykes Pass, Sebastian Property, Unit 3A, section two, White Oak Trace, Sebastian Property, Unit 3C, section two, White Oak Trace, and Sebastian Property, Unit 3D, White Oak Trace, Whiteberry Drive. Number six, an ordinance providing notwithstanding section 2133a of the Code of Ordinances that employees in the Department of Finance and Administration who's because of Starz implementation will lose accumulated vacation leave may carry over accumulated vacation leave in excess of 168 hours at the end of calendar year 2007, providing that the employee shall have his or her accumulated vacation hours reduced to 168 hours on June 30, 2008, and providing that if employee separates from employment of the Urban County Government prior to the June 30, 2008, then he or she shall be paid pursuant to section 2133e of the Code of Ordinances for no more than 168 hours, plus those hours accumulated for service during the calendar year 2008. Number seven, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, schedule number 98. Number eight, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to require, to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds remaining in FY 2007 into FY 2008 as approved at the December 4, 2007 council work session, schedule number 111. Number nine, an ordinance closing a portion of Owens Street, determining that all property owners abutting the portion of the street to be closed have been identified, provided with written notice of the proposed closing and consented thereto in writing, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute acquitclaim deeds, deeds transferring the former right-of-way to the abutting owners subject to reservation of easements for access and maintenance of existing utilities in the former right-of-way. Number 10, an ordinance amending section 4-12.4d of the Code of Ordinances to increase the kennel license fee from $25 to $135 effective on the date of passage. Number 11, an ordinance amending section 4-19e of the Code of Ordinances to increase the fine for violations of the prohibition against dogs running at large to not less than $50 for the first offense, $100 for a second offense, $250 for a third offense, and $500 for a fourth and each subsequent offense occurring within a 36-month period. Number 12, an ordinance amending section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of clerical assistant, grade 104N, and creating one position of staff assistant, grade 107N, abolishing one position of recreation supervisor, grade 110E, and creating one position of park naturalist, grade 113E, and reclassifying the incumbent and the division of Parks and Recreation. And pursuant to ordinance number 197, 2002, adjusting the salary of one employee in the Division of Revenue and one employee in the Division of Traffic Engineering occupying the positions of staff assistant after review pursuant to the Pay Equity Ordinance, all to become retroactive to October 1, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule number 107. And number 13, an ordinance amending section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of engineering technician senior, grade 113E, creating one position of associate engineering technician principal, grade 114E, and reclassifying the incumbent in the Division of Engineering effective retroactive to August 20, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule number 109. Number 14, an ordinance amending section 22.5 of the Code of Ordinances transferring one position of van driver, part-time, grade 104N, from the Division of Adult Services to the Office of Aging Services. Number 15, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, which grant funds are in the amount of $125,561 federal funds under the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program are for reimbursement of costs related to the incarceration of undocumented criminal aliens, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 101, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 16, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of 911 Coordinator Commercial Mobile Radio Service Board, which grant funds are in the amount of $147,457 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds are for improvements to the regional 911 system, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 102, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 17, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $37,282 federal funds are for the purchase of portable interoperable communications tower for the Division of Environmental and Emergency Management, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 103, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 18, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $98,304 federal funds are for expansion of the mobile data computer network in the Division of Police, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 105, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $147,457 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds are for improvements to the regional 911 system, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 102, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 17, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $37,282 federal funds are for the purchase of portable interoperable communications tower for the Division of Environmental and Emergency Management, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 103, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 18, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $98,304 federal funds are for improvements to the regional 911 system, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 104, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $217,844 federal funds are for expansion of the mobile data computer network in the Division of Police, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, the acceptance, appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 105, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 21, 20, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Environmental and Public Protection Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $5,000 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds are for participation in the mercury collection program, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $1,250 as a local match appropriating funds pursuant to schedule number 106, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. And number 21, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to the franchise agreement with EnSite Kentucky Partners, 2LP, as previously amended to extend and renew the term of the non-exclusive franchise for cable television system, a term of five years from 15 to 20 years, with an effective date retroactive to September 3, 2003, September 3, 2007, and return for additional services and at no cost to the government, Urban County Government.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to accept?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a move, motion and a second to approve, second readings. Is there a discussion? So can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay. Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp, if you would, mark on your screen, please. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ellinger?
Yes, again.
Oh, sorry about that. Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stenit?
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
And Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit, would you please vote on your, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We can now move to Roman numeral five, the first reading of ordinances.
Ordinance number 22, an ordinance changing the zone from a professional office, P1 Zone, to a highway services business, B3 Zone, for 1.16 net, 3.57 gross acres of property located at 2374 Lake Park Road, subject to a certain use restriction imposed as condition of granting the zone change. Value placed, real estate services amended. Number 23, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, schedule number 110. Number 24, an ordinance amending section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances, creating two positions of equipment operator senior, grade 109N, and abolishing two positions of public service worker, grade 106N. worker, grade 106N, and reclassifying the incumbents in the Division of Waste Management to become effective retroactive to October 15, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule number 112. Number 25. An ordinance amending Section 215 of the Code of Ordinances, abolishing one position of recreation supervisor, grade 110E, and creating one position of recreation specialist senior, grade 113E, in the Division of Parks and Recreation, and appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule number 114. Number 26. An ordinance amending Section 215 of the Code of Ordinances, abolishing one position of operations manager, grade 116E, and creating one position of facility manager, grade 118E, and reclassifying the incumbent in the Division of Building Maintenance and Construction to become retroactive to May 28, 2007, and abolishing one position of skilled trades workers, grade 111N, in the Division of Building Maintenance and Construction, and appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule number 115. Number 27. An ordinance authorizing a 6.544% stipend for the position of permanent sworn battalion chief, grade 319E, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, making the base salary of this position equal to other positions of the same rank, retroactive to June 25, 2007, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule number 89. And number 28. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Arts Electric, Inc., for a generator for the Government Center Building, increasing the contract price by the sum of $2,191 from $229,600 to $231,791, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule number 113.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of ordinances?
Move approval. Actually, they're, each one of them, right.
Oh.
Right.
Don't need that. Okay.
We can move on with the second reading of resolutions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Resolution number one. A resolution accepting the bid of Pro-Tech Security Sales, establishing a price contract for tactical body armor for the Division of Police. Number two. A resolution accepting the bid of Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated in the amount of $726,559 for an aerial ladder fire truck. Number three. A resolution accepting the bid of Chapman Printing Company in the amount of $26,512.50 for printing of the 2007 comprehensive plan. Number four. A resolution accepting the bid of Century Equipment, establishing a price contract for golf course utility vehicles for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number five. A resolution accepting the bid of Radio Communication System Incorporated, doing business as RCS Communications, establishing a price contract for emergency equipment for the Division of Police. Number six. A resolution accepting the bid of Safety Co. Incorporated, establishing a price contract for radar traffic counters. Number seven. A resolution accepting the bids of Recrionics Incorporated, Leslie's Pool Mart, and IMSCO, doing business as OP Aquatics, establishing price contracts for swimming pool supplies for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number eight. A resolution accepting the bids of Caudle Seed and Mid-South Baseball Incorporated, establishing price contracts for baseball field drying conditioners for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number nine. A resolution accepting the bids of Clem's Refrigerated Foods and Somerset Food Services, establishing price contracts for food for the Family Care Center. Number 10. A resolution accepting the bid of Remotech Incorporated, subsidiary of North Ruman, in the amount of $120,456 for hazardous duty robot for the Division of Police. Number 11. A resolution accepting the bid of Borger LLC in the amount of $47,669 for rotary low sludge transfer pumps and the Division of Water and Air Quality. Number 12. A resolution accepting the bid of Mason Dixon Information Systems Incorporated in the amount of $5,250 for printing of the 2007 land use map. Number 13. A resolution accepting the bid of BMH Photo Video Pro Audio in the amount of $36,340 for Sony Camera Systems. Number 14. A resolution accepting the bid of Arrow Electric Company in the amount of $220,110 for installation of inner duct conduit for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number 15. A resolution accepting the bid of RJ Smith Controls and Consulting Incorporated in the amount of $34,572 for variable drives for Town Branch Wastewater Treatment Plant for the Division of Water and Air Quality. Number 16. A resolution accepting the bid of Love Line Industries Incorporated, establishing a price contract for rain suits for the Division of Solid Waste. Number 17. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Wayne Supply Company for the use of one excavator and/or bulldozer for the use at the Firearms Training Center at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 18. A resolution authorizing and directing the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant to Code of Ordinances, Section 1886, to install multi-way stop controls at Masterson Station Drive and Jackblen Lane. Number 19. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute 2008 general term orders for the Fayette County Clerk and the Fayette County Sheriff, establishing the number of deputies and assistants allowed to each and the compensation allowed to each deputy and assistant, subject to the limits of for each category as specified in the general term orders and subject to the fees collected by the officers respectively in their 75% accounts pursuant to KRS 64.350 subsection 1. Number 20. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent storm sewer and temporary construction easement from Jeffrey and Terry Lutz for property located at 224 Forest Park Road for the Elizabeth Street Drainage Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $3,450 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. 21. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from John and Jane Pappas for the property located at 218 Floral Park for the Elizabeth Street Drainage Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $225 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 22. A resolution amending Resolution number 50-2006, which authorized and directed the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement, a permanent traffic signal easement, and permanent right-of-way from Bluegrass Baptist Church located at 812 East Loudoun Avenue and 820 East Loudoun Avenue for the Loudoun Avenue Improvements Project to include 808 East Loudoun Avenue. Number 23. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Branstad or Carroll Incorporated for design of the new Senior Citizens Center at a cost not to exceed $48,000. 24. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Partners for Youth Foundation Incorporated for continued operation of the truancy assessment center at a cost not to exceed $75,691. 25. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Lafayette Football Booster Club Incorporated, $600. South Lexington Youth Baseball Incorporated, $925. Els Incorporated, $1,025. Metropolitan Women's Club Incorporated, $600. And Central Kentucky Radio I Incorporated, $1,000 for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. 26. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Nesbit Engineering Incorporated for White Mark Court Drainage Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed $45,700. Number 27. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated for Appomattox Road Culpert Replacement Design and Contract Documents at a cost not to exceed $66,000. 28. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Fuller Moss, Barker, Scott, and May Engineers Incorporated for Lock LeMans Drive Rainage Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed $60,000. 29. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Midway College for awarding an Associate of Arts degree in law enforcement at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Number 30. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with the University of Kentucky Research Foundation to design and implement the Community and Support Services Evaluation Plan for the Bluegrass Aspidale Revitalization Hope VI Grant at a cost not to exceed $27,498, retroactive to May 4, 2007. 31. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with Art in Motion Incorporated and Transit Authority of Lexington Fayette Urban County Government for a bus shelter to be located on the Versailles Road Corridor at a cost not to exceed $14,000. 32. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a client engagement agreement with Metaformers Incorporated for professional computer services related to the development and implementation of the EPM module for the Starz program with an effective date retroactive to August 20, 2007, at a cost not to exceed $344,840. Number 33.
Mayor? Uh, Mayor? Excuse me. Yeah, Madam Clerk.
I think I spoke first.
Councilmember Lane?
I spoke first.
I didn't.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution number 33.
I second. There's a motion.
Second.
And it's second to table. Item Resolution 33. Non-debatable?
Tell when. You table it, tell when.
Forever.
Oh, thank you. All right. There's a motion to table item 33, or Resolution 33. Non-debatable? Ready for a vote?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of tabling Resolution 33? Please indicate by saying aye and punching. All right. All in favor of tabling will vote aye. All who are not in favor of tabling Resolution 33 will vote nay.
Your count is eight to five.
Mr. Myers?
Okay, eight to six. Eight to seven.
So the motion is not tabled. So Madam Clerk, you may continue.
I have a motion.
Wait, what? All right. I'm sorry. Councilmember DeCamp?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend item number 33 under second reading resolutions, which clarifies that the council wants any and all options for addressing the water supply deficit issue fully explored and considered by the Kentucky Public Service Commission in case number 2007-00134, to delete all mention of Kentucky American Water Company and to delete the third paragraph of the preamble in its entirety. And if there's any confusion, the third paragraph reads, "Whereas the council believes that the resolution has been from time to time erroneously interpreted by certain parties as requiring any solution to central Kentucky water supply problem to be focused solely on the Kentucky River as the source of supply of water." The Law Department says this is not a material change.
I second.
There's a motion and a second?
Who seconded that?
To make the adjustments that Councilmember DeCamp just offered to Resolution 33. So is there discussion?
Who seconded that, please?
Seconded by Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you.
So discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellinger?
Vice Mayor, can we get a copy of this resolution? Because we always get the heading, but I'd like to see the whole resolution, because there were parts of it, there were parts of it that I didn't agree with, and I have not seen that copy yet. No, this is a, I've requested that a paragraph be deleted on the whereas section, and I have not seen it, and I would...
I gave it to you earlier.
Can we have Legal come up to discuss this and tell them that paragraph had been deleted?
I gave you a copy, and you received two copies. This is your... I did. I just... I gave you the whole... That's why you looked at it and said you wanted the third paragraph out.
All right, let's have, okay.
I gave you a copy, Chuck.
Just a minute, we've got... The resolution... Mr. Askew?
Yes, sir. The resolution that I believe was circulated to the council earlier today had an amendment that deleted the references to Kentucky American Water Company, I believe, in two places. And I believe in both of those places, they occurred in the preamble. Councilmember DeCamp is now asking that in addition to those two changes, that the third whereas clause in the preamble to that resolution, which he just read, also be deleted.
That's what you looked at and said you wanted it out.
And he is correct that we do not believe that would constitute a material change, nor, Councilmember Ellinger, would it result in a change in the title to the resolution.
All right, how about...
Now, if you all would, I know you've got several other things that need to be read. If it would be helpful, we could try to amend this one up and try to see if we could get that paragraph deleted. If you'd like to see one in its entirety, if you don't have that, would that be helpful?
I would like to see one before I vote on it, what we were voting on. Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and do that.
All right, so we can then proceed with the...
You didn't just take that one out when it comes back?
There's a motion on the floor. Yeah, I think you can go ahead and make a call. All right, so the motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Susan made a very good point here. She suggested if you wanted to hold on the motion, taking action until you saw it, you could do that. I'll try to run, can't guarantee how well-formatted it will be, but we'll...
I'll make a motion to postpone this item until he comes back with that.
Second.
All right.
There's a motion to postpone and a second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? No? All right. We, the motion carries, so let's get it confirmed. And let's move ahead then. Parliamentarians?
Keep in mind, that is postponing the amendment, not the resolution itself. It's postponing the change.
All right. Okay. Yep. We can continue with the reading of the resolutions? Okay.
Okay, so do you want me to read number 33, or do you want me to not read 33 until later?
Don't read 33.
Read it later in the document.
Yeah.
Okey-dokey. No problemo. Number 34. A resolution authorizing the, authorizing and directing the Division of Traffic Engineering pursuant to Code of Ordinances, Section 1886, to install multi-way stop controls at Summer Hill Drive and Squire Oak Drive. Number 35. A resolution compensating exempt employees who worked and continue to work on the implementation of Starz software, providing that said employees who have reached the compensatory time cap shall receive compensation of 20% of their base salary. That said compensation shall be retroactive to October 15, 2007, and shall include, conclude on January 15, 2008. Number 36. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement from Helen Sosby for property located at 687 Woodward Lane for the Wilderness Road Woodward Lane Sanitary Sewer Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,450 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 37. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement from David Royce for property located at 691 Woodward Lane for the Wilderness Road Woodward Lane Sanitary Sewer Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $2,970 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 38. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government[1683.08] to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $44,603 federal funds, and are for the Spanish-language initiative project, $38,315, and controllable propane-fueled fire extinguisher training equipment and training videos, $6,288. 39. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Cabinet for Health and Family Services under the Prevent Child Abuse Kentucky Initiative and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $36,000 federal funds, and are for a childcare assistance program at the Family Care Center. Number 40. A resolution authorizing and directing, authorizing the Department of Chief Information Office on behalf of the Urban County Government to purchase QuietQuest software for use in stat source control and configuration management related to certain elements of the Stars program from DLT Solutions Incorporated, a sole source provider at a cost not to exceed Number 41. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement with the West End Community Empowerment Program for use of the space at the Black and Williams Neighborhood Center. 42. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with Murray State University for academic instruction in the Spanish language at a cost not to exceed $4,995. 43. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with Lily Wastewater Management for operation of Blue Sky Wastewater Treatment Plan at a cost not to exceed $36,000. 44. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Cell Co-Partnership and Business as Verizon Wireless for the provision of 3-1-1 service at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 45. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a rental agreement and addendum number one with Lexington Center Corporation for the Lexington Opera House for the Kitty Capers Program at a cost not to exceed $7,400. 46. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a rental agreement with Lexington Center Corporation for Heritage Hall Center and East for the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Program at a cost not to exceed $9,975. Number 47. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a service agreement with Sheller's Fitness and Cycling for Dunbar Community Center at a cost not to exceed $600. Number 48. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to client engagement agreement with Metaformers Incorporated extending the term of the agreement through March 30, 2008, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 49. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Reach Incorporated for an additional $100,000 in home funds for the First-Time Home Buyers Program at a cost not to exceed an additional $100,000. Number 15, number 50. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Community Ventures Corporation for extension of Community Ventures Corporations FY 2005 Home-Funded First-Time Home Buyers Program to October 21, 2008, an allocation of $258,533.15 in recaptured funds to Community Ventures Corporation at a cost not to exceed $258,533.15 in recaptured fund. And number 51. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the Contract With Past Respects LLC for the renovation of Cadent Town School, increasing the contract price by the sum of $12,619 from $175,309 to $187,928. That's all of the, except for number 33.
So we're waiting now for Commissioner Askew to give us the new language on the amendment to Resolution 33.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the motion to table prior to its reading.
Second.
It's a motion and a second to reconsider the table?
The motion to table, yes.
Motion to table.
I believe that's debatable, and I would like to ask the maker of this new motion for what reason he's done this.
Because I'm going to change my vote.
I figured that.
But a motion to reconsider can't be, I'm told that the motion to reconsider can be, okay, but on the same, on the same, at the same session?
Yeah. Have to be the same session.
Okay.
Debatable, we can all have a...
Okay, proceeding along.
Can I ask?
Councilmember Maloney.
I don't understand why we're tabling this. We've discussed it, and I just think everybody wants to go on and vote, and let's get on with it, because from my understanding, 21st is where we can have everything turned in. If this body decides tonight that they're against it, vote, let it go. If you're for it, let it go. Let's get on with it, and let the public of Lexington know what we stand for, instead of just sitting back, not doing anything, and making a decision what's best for this city. So I would say we go ahead, either vote it down or vote it up.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, and we've got a second.
Mr., I'm not going to debate that, but I think we, I think we agreed that we would wait until Commissioner Askew came back, because there's been a request for the total resolution, and I don't think it is proper to take any action until what we agreed to do, and everyone agreed that we would wait till he got back. And I think after he gets back and everybody has a chance to look at it, then we can, at that time, I think, take some action. I think it was an agreement by this council to wait till he got back.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just as the one who made that motion, I want to ask the parliamentarian is, the motion that's on the floor to reconsider, is it, does it take precedent over the motion that was made to postpone until we got that back?
Well, the motion is to reconsider item 33, not the amendment. It has nothing to do with the amendment, so in this case, probably, it would.
So we need to take the vote on...
Take the vote on this and then move on.
Okay. Say that again, please.
The motion is to reconsider, motion to table on 33, has nothing to do with amendment or the changes that were just proposed.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor.
All right, sir.
Mr. Vice Mayor, since we had a confusion on the last vote, we have a roll call vote on this one.
That's fine. Is there any more discussion? Well, I think we've...
Run them all off.
Yeah. Dr. Stevens, you got any opinion on, is it, are you agree with our parliamentarian? You're in another authority on parliamentary procedure, just any comments?
No, I think that I agree with...
Good shape. We want to make sure that we're in good shape on this.
No, no, I'm not disputing you, Mr. Parliamentarian. I'm just, he's got his Robert rules over there in his pack.
Called a question.
All right. Question's been called. All in favor of the motion to reconsider? Please, yeah, call the roll. Madam Clerk. All right, let's make sure that we know what we're voting on.
The motion...
Any requirement? Is this the majority required? Councilmember Stenit?
Can you just restate the motion, please? To reconsider? Motion to table?
Reconsider the motion to table? Is that correct, Mr. Beard?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
If you would please vote electronically. Thank you. Mr. DeCamp?
No.
Mr. Ellinger? Ms. Gordon?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
No.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens? Mr. Stenit?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Ah.
Mr. Blevins?
No.
And Mr. Blues?
No.
Tabled.
That motion passes by eight to seven, sir. Chairman?
Okay, so now, so now we revert to the motion to table. Okay.
Undebatable.
To the original motion to table that Councilmember Lane offered. All right, and a second.
That failed.
We had the second, we had, so we're back to the motion to table. It's not debatable. All right. All in favor of tabling Resolution 33, please...
May I ask who made this motion to table?
Who made the motion?
Yeah, who?
Councilmember Lane made the motion.
I think when he made his motion, it failed.
But he asked to reconsider it. He made the motion to reconsider his party's...
And we just voted on reconsidering the motion.
I would think there had to be a new motion, but I think we're...
We are reconsidering the original motion. So the motion that is being reconsidered is standing. Is that correct? Parliamentarian has declared that the motion to table is standing, and so we are now voting on that original motion after having been reconsidered. All right? Okay. All in favor of tabling Resolution 33, please indicate by voting aye. And those who oppose tabling, please indicate by voting no.
That motion passed eight to seven.
Motion to table passes. So Madam Clerk, now we can continue with...
Need a motion to approve the second reading resolutions, please.
There's a motion and a second for all the resolutions, except 33, because 33 has been tabled. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Is this roll call? This is roll call.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
It's qualify on 49, yes, on the rest.
Got you covered, thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yes.
If you all would please record your vote electronically as I call your name, please. Thank you. Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stenit?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
And Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Thank you. No, you're fine. I will denote it. It was number 49, correct?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. So we can proceed to, number several, yeah, first reading of resolutions.
Yes. Resolution number 52. A resolution accepting the bid of Education Remedies Incorporated Doing Business as JDC, Cleaning, Establishing and Price Contract for Custodial Services for the Central Kentucky Job Center. Resolution number 53. A resolution accepting the bid of L&amp;N Commercial Cleaning, Establishing and Price Contract for Custodial Services for Public Safety. Number 54. A resolution accepting the bid of Municipal Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $229,985 for a street sweeper for the Division of Fleet Services. Number 55. A resolution ratifying probationary civil service appointments of Chantelli Baker Child Care Program, A, Grade 107 N, 11.278 hourly in the Division of Youth Services, effective December 17, 2007. Shirley Cruz Staff Assistant, Grade 107 N, 15.951 hourly in the Division of Police, effective January 7, 2008. James Hall Information Systems Specialist Senior, Grade 114 E, $1,422.64 biweekly in the Division of Police, effective January 7, 2008. Ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Mark Brand, Police Sergeant, Grade 315 N, 26.388 hourly in the Division of Police, effective November 11, 2007. Melissa Sadlecheck, Police Lieutenant, Grade 317 E, $2,752.46 biweekly in the Division of Police, effective November 11, 2007. Approving leave of absence for Chantae Moberly, Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108 N, in the office of the mayor, request a 90-day council-approved leave without pay from January 9, 2008, to April 7, 2008. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Christopher Burlow, James Norris, Blake Quinn, John Robinson, Police Trainee, Grade 311 N, 16.052 hourly in the Division of Police, effective December 10, 2007. Number 56. A resolution supporting the efforts of Central Baptist Hospital, St. Joseph Healthcare, UK Healthcare Albert V. Chandler Hospital, UK Healthcare Good Samaritan, and the other members of the Tobacco-Free Healthcare Collaborative in their efforts to eliminate smoking from hospital campuses as well as facilities owned or leased by the hospitals. Number 57. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of improvements made to Shellato Park consisting of a special surface ball fields, Toyota Bluegrass Miracle League field, a concession restroom facility, BB&amp;T building, and a picnic pavilion, Mack Albright Rotary Pavilion, from Bluegrass Miracle League Incorporated, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility agreement with Bluegrass Miracle League Incorporated for baseball facilities for youth program and recreational opportunities for people with disabilities and the elderly. A resolution initiating for planning commission review and recommendation the rezoning of approximately three acres of property located at 898 Georgetown Street and a portion of 798 Georgetown Street from an agricultural urban aid U-zone to a planned neighborhood residential R3 zone. Number 59. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deconveying of temporary construction easement from the Shetlands Homeowners Association Incorporated located at 889 Starshute Parkway for the Starshute Parkway Extension, and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,310 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 60. A resolution accepting the bid of MaCom Inc., MPB, MBP, number 26369, establishing a price contract for hardware, software engineering, and installation services for 800 megahertz radio communications equipment for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 61. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit project profiles to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority and to provide any additional information requested in connection with the project profiles, which are consideration for wastewater projects for state funding by the 2008 Kentucky General Assembly, the East Hickman Pump Station Expansion and Rehabilitation, $3,100,000. The Bluegrass Airport Pump Station Expansion, $1,974,000. The Wolf Run Pump Station and Expansion, $10,500,000. And the comprehensive sanitary sewer project remaining unsewered areas, face $3,300,000. Number 62. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a software product license agreement with Granicus Incorporated for maintenance and support of the video web streaming and council chambers voting system for the remainder of FY 08 and two additional years, subject to sufficient funds being appropriated in subsequent years and a cost not to exceed $15,600, $2,600 per month. Number 63. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Berea College, $150. Wyndham Downs Homeowners Association Incorporated, $800. And Copperfield Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $800, for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 64. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Volunteers of America of Kentucky Incorporated for the support of emergency housing for homeless families at a cost not to exceed $8,000. Number 65. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a subordination agreement with Chase Bank, Edward Norman Wilson, and Mary Catherine Wendell Garner, for subordination of Financial Assistance Program Mortgage on property located at 3109 Starling Drive at no cost to the government. Number 66. A resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a professional services agreement with FM Solutions Incorporated for services relating to the downtown facilities, evaluation at a cost not to exceed $94,785. Number 67. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Board of Emergency and Medical Services and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $10,000 Commonwealth of Kentucky Funds and are for the purchase of bicycles outfitted with advanced life support equipment for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 68. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $1,395,000 federal funds and are for the flood hazard mitigation project for FY 2009, including the purchase of 10 single-family houses on Fort Sumter Drive and Gale Drive. And number 69. A resolution accepting the bid of CMH of Kentucky Incorporated Doing Business as Love Homes, number 853, in the amount of $706,906.76 for temporary housing for the Newtown Pike Extension.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Ellinger?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry. Wait, 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 timeout.
Well, I'd already pushed it, but it keeps coming in, and I pushed it three times. But that's fine. Title mine.
I was looking to my right, I wasn't looking to the electronic instrument panel. Forgive me.
I pushed it twice, and it kept coming in and out, but that's fine.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move to suspend the rules so that we can do a second reading on item number 69, please. So moved.
Item number 69. First and second, okay. Councilmember Beard?
I too move that we suspend the rules and give a second reading to number 65, please.
All right. Councilmember Maloney?
Number 66, please.
66. Councilmember James?
Number 58, please.
Thank you. Councilmember McCord?
57, please.
57. Councilmember Lane?
Suspend the rules on number 66, please.
66 is done, but you get to do it again. Councilmember Ellinger?
61 and 62, along with 52, 53, 55. Let's just do all of them. They're all, they're all, can we not? Since we're not right...
That is a typical...
Thank you.
It is a typical...
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
It is.
I'm trying to get... Okay, now it's working. All right, we have... And the motion is to suspend the rules on the reading of resolutions, second reading of resolutions on 52 through 66, right?
69.
69. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, is there discussion? Not hearing discussion. All in favor of suspending the rules for second reading, please indicate by saying aye and voting aye. All opposed, no.
No, except on 69, Clerk, I'll say yes to 69, please.
Okay. All right, the motion carries. So... Madam Clerk? You can read the...
Resolution number 52.
Are we okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Resolution number 52 for second reading, a resolution accepting the bid of Education Remedies Incorporated Doing Business as JDC Cleaning Establishing Price Contract for Custodial Services for the Central Kentucky Job Center. Number 53, a resolution accepting the bid of L&amp;N Commercial Cleaning Establishing Price Contract for Custodial Services for Public Safety. Number 54, a resolution accepting the bid of Municipal Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $229,985 for a street sweeper for the Division of Fleet Services. Number 55, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Chantelle Baker at Child Care Program Aid, Grade 107N, 11.278 hourly in the Division of Youth Services, effective December 17, 2007. Shirley Cruz Staff Assistant, Grade 107N, 15.951 hourly in the Division of Police, effective January 7, 2008. James Hall Information Systems Specialist Senior, Grade 114E, $1,422.64 biweekly in the Division of Police, effective January 7, 2008. Ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Mark Brand, Police Sergeant, Grade 315N, 26.388 hourly in the Division of Police, effective November 11, 2007. Melissa Sadlecheck, Police Lieutenant, Grade 317E, $2,752.46 biweekly in the Division of Police, effective November 11, 2007. Approving leave of absence for Chantee Morberly, Staff Assistant Senior, Grade 108N, in the Office of the Mayor, request a 90-day council-approved leave without pay from January 9, 2008, to April 7, 2008. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Christopher Burlow, James Norris, Blake Quinn, John Robinson, Police Trainee, Grade 311N, 16.052 hourly in the Division of Police, effective December 10, 2007. Number 56, a resolution supporting the efforts of Central Baptist Hospital, St. Joseph Healthcare, UK Healthcare, Albert B. Chandler Hospital, UK Healthcare Good Samaritan, and the other members of the Tobacco-Free Healthcare Collaborative in their efforts to eliminate smoking from hospital campuses as well as facilities owned or leased by the hospitals. Number 57, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of improvements made to Shillato Park consisting of a special surface ball field, Toyota Bluegrass Miracle League field, a concession restroom facility BB&amp;T building, and a picnic pavilion, Mac Albright Rotary Pavilion for Bluegrass Miracle League Incorporated, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility agreement with Bluegrass Miracle League Incorporated for baseball facilities for youth program and recreational opportunities for people with disabilities and the elderly. Number 58, a resolution initiating for planning commission review and recommendation for rezoning of approximately three acres of property located at 898 Georgetown Street and a portion of 798 Georgetown Street from an agricultural urban AU zone to a planned neighborhood residential R3 zone. Number 59, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a D conveying a temporary construction easement from the Shetlands Homeowners Association Incorporated located at 889 Starshute Parkway for the Starshute Parkway Extension, and authorizing payment of the amount of $1,310 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 60, a resolution accepting the bid of MaCom Inc., MPP, number 26369, establishing a price contract for hardware, software engineering, and installation services of 800 megahertz radio communications equipment for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 61, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant, submit project profiles to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority and to provide any additional information requested in connection with the project profiles which are for consideration of four wastewater projects for state funding by the 2008 Kentucky General Assembly, the East Hickman Pump Station Expanding and Rehabilitation, $3,100,000; the Bluegrass Airport Pump Station Expansion, $1,974,000; and the Wolf Run Pump Station and Expansion, $10,500,000; and the Conference of Sanitary Sewer Project, remaining unsewered areas, Phase 3, $3,300,000. Number 62, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a software product license agreement with Granicus Incorporated for maintenance and support of the video web streaming and council chambers voting system for the remainder of FYI-8 and two additional years, subject to sufficient funds being appropriated in subsequent years, at a cost not to exceed $15,600, that's $2,600 per month. Number 63, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Berea College, $150, Wyndham Downs Homeowners Association Incorporated, $800, and Copperfield Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $800, for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 64, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Volunteers of America of Kentucky Incorporated for the support of emergency housing for homeless families at a cost not to exceed $8,000. Number 65, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a subordination agreement with Chase Bank, Edward Norman Wilson and Mary Catherine Wendell Garner for subordination of a financial assistance program mortgage on property located at 3109 Starling Drive at no cost to the government. Number 66, a resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a professional services agreement with FM Solutions Incorporated for services related to the downtown facilities evaluation at a cost not to exceed $94,785. Number 67, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Board of Emergency Medical Services and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $10,000 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds and are for purchase for bicycles outfitted with advanced life support equipment for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 68, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $1,395,000 federal funds and are for a flood hazard mitigation project for FYI-2009, including the purchase of 10 single-family houses on Fort Sumter Drive and Gale Drive. And number 69, a resolution accepting the bid of CMH of Kentucky Inc. Doing Business as Love Homes, number 853, in the amount of $706,906.76 for temporary housing for the Newtown Pike Extension.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call. Need a roll call vote. But first, we need a motion.
Somebody make a motion?
Motion to accept, we get a... Someone will offer a motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing discussion, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Do second to that, please, if they would. Please. Thank you. Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney? Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens? Has left the premises. Mr. Stennett?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
And Mr. Blues? Thank you, that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item Roman numeral eight is communications from the mayor.
Move approval.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. And voting aye. And voting aye. And all opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number Roman numeral nine, communications from the mayor, FYI. For information only, no vote required? All right. Roman numeral 10, announcements, are there any announcements? Mr. Councilmember Maloney? You were there, now you're not. You're not? All right. You are present, okay. Roman, item number 11 on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone present who wishes to offer a public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, well, let's, yeah, there's... And to our constituents and all, and viewing audiences, have a holly, jolly holiday. Thank you all so much. Do we get a vote?
No.